Meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now called to order. If you will all join the commission in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the oath of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you will please read the roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Campana?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Hill? Commissioner Schlegel? Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Stonehouse?
Here. Commissioners, if I can have a motion to excuse Commissioner Hill and Commissioner Schlegel from the meeting. Mayor Protem?
I move that we excuse Commissioner Schlegel and Commissioner Hill as they are both on vacation.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Say it.
Any other comments, commission?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes. Yes. Motion passes five to zero. That brings us to announcements. We have a number of vacancies within city committees. We have two openings in the Board of Zoning Appeals, two in the Board of Review, two in the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, one in the Harbor Advisory Committee, one in the Housing Commission, two in the Investment Advisory Board, two in the Local Development Finance Authority, one in the Local Offices Compensation Commission, one in the Marquette County Transit Authority, and three openings on the Prescott Park Advisory Committee. I have no further announcements. That brings us to the approval of the agenda. Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of you. If I can have a motion to approve, please. Commissioner Smith?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Say it.
Any further comments? Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Frazier?
No comments.
Then, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying yes. Yes. Any opposed by no? Hearing none, motion passes five to zero. Boards and committees, we will welcome two new members tonight. Madeline Goodman to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee and Jeremy Johnson to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. Jeremy and Madeline, if you could meet me at the podium, I would appreciate it. We have Madeline, but not Jeremy. Madeline, on behalf of the City of Marquette, I'd like to present you with this official City of Marquette pin. And I am told when you wear it, as a member of the city committee, it gives you superpowers. So exercise it very carefully. And our clerk will now swear you in.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Marquette, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Arts and Culture Advisory Committee of the City of Marquette according to the best of my abilities?
And if I could have two signatures, you can keep one over here.
Thank you.
That works. There we go. Great. I'll take one and you keep one. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for helping us.
Thank you.
We have two appointments this evening, two. That's item two on your agenda. Nicole Durley-Russ to the Downtown Development Authority for an unexpired term ending 1 of 1/22, and Jill Mallon to the Board of Zoning Appeals for an unexpired term ending 2/15.
Also glad to see them serving.
Any other commissioner? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes. Yes. Any opposed by saying no? Hearing none, motion passes five to zero. This brings us to our first public comment period. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when addressing the commission. Public comment is open.
David Allen, 805 North Front Street, here on behalf of legal women voters. I just wanted to mention that the website vote4011.org is up and running. All nine candidates have responded to all the questions, and so people can log on there and see what the answers to questions were for the commission. We'll also have a candidate forum here on July 17, 6:30 to 8:30, and that's all for the primary election on August 6. Thanks very much.
Douglas Dykema, 623 East Art Street. I'm referring, gonna be talking about a letter I received on May 6 of 2019 from the city engineer, Mr. Keith Whittington, about the Lighthouse Park project. Now that the project is almost getting completed, he referred to one of the new roads as Museum Drive, the little circle that goes around there. I hope and I wish that that is not named Museum Drive, that it'll be continued to call, be called Coast Guard Road in honor of all who have served, who have been stationed here at the Coast Guard Station, who have served Michigan, Marquette, Lake Superior, and our country. In honor of them. So that is all I'd like to just say, is that it has not changed to Museum Drive, but to continue to be called Coast Guard Road. Thank you.
Anyone else to address the commission?
Lois Campy, 612 East Michigan Street. I'm here for the same reason as Mr. Dykema, from the letter from the city dated May 6 of 2019 from Mr. Whittington. And I'll just repeat what he said. They're referring to Museum Drive. For the same reasons he gave, I do not believe it should be changed to Museum Drive. I believe that it should remain Coast Guard Road in honor of those that have served, are still serving, those that have been stationed here, will be stationed here, and it's well known as that road. So I ask that you do not change it to Museum Drive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Jeffardo, 350 East Wizmarquette, these are my opinions. June 10, Mr. Stonehouse mentioned how much public lakeshore we have compared to Traverse, and that we're always getting more in reference to the piers. The truth is, we keep losing shoreline to erosion. We also lost an acre for the new Coast Guard Station for nothing that wasn't there already, and that chain-linked fence still was there on Saturday. To compare us to Traverse is inappropriate. There's no excuse not to be the best we can be. Not one in seven seem to care that Chyris Park is eroding at an alarming rate. None bothered to check on the progress of our proposed tombolo. The manager's office had no clue. So I did their work for them and learned of the progress. Zip, nada, nothing in a year's time to save one of the most priceless urban shorelines in the whole nation. This board and manager are incognizant of what we have. Please hire a manager who has a sense of priority. Also foolish was Mr. Frazier's comments that I'm not from here, and that our founders came ashore at Founder's Landing. But someone told us his own great-grandfather said the views wouldn't be blocked. Our founders would turn in their graves if they knew of the buffoonery that's prevailed there. In fact, the Founder's Day Committee threatened to sue. The stupidity of that boathouse location leaves this board no case to cry on. Regardless of ancestry, Marquette has evolved into a place that's better suited for nature lovers like me. Mr. Frazier might reconsider Marco Island, a beautiful place with all the money and glitz one needs. Please keep Marco down there and Marquette up here. June 10, we entertained the tree replacement ordinance and poll signs on Third Street. Most members handled both items well by referring them to the planning board. However, Mr. Campana left us an utter shock when he acted as if poll signs were important enough to violate steadfast rules over. He threatened our public process. Every business deserves a sign. The planning board needs to arrive at criteria by which businesses are allowed poll signs if less impactful signage isn't practical. The dentist will have his sign, and soon, but no sooner than it takes the legal process to play out. Poll signs weren't even published on the June 10 agenda until meeting time. Five years into this game, Mr. Campana expected this board to go along with him to the point that he became flustered. He is literally more concerned with one business sign getting up 30 days sooner than Chyris Park eroding into the lake. The beach is now so narrow, a record number of users will cram onto half the space, stressing the dune grass and wooded areas further, along with those new ill-placed benches that encourage users to trample the dune grass. Those who love Chyris Park and McCarthy's Cove are urged to come forward while there's still anything left to share with our generations to come. As of now, nothing is in the works, and this board seems content to just let it go.
Anyone else to address the commission? Seeing none, public comment is closed. That brings us to the presentation, and that will be the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And Ms. Holstrom, if you can come up and do that, please. Thank you.
Okay, well, thanks for inviting me. I do have my phone off, but my pager is on. I'm on call, so. It goes off. Apologize. So, yeah, so we've got the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. I am purposely wearing my shirt that has Bs all over it to remind you we are a pretty busy committee. We have a lot going on. That was just my phone. Okay, now, going to the next slide. Sherry, where's? I'm such a Mac person, it takes me. Jen, what am I doing? So it's this arrow, right? Is that correct? This is... There we go. Just don't touch the mouse. All right, so the Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, to remind you, was established by the city commission. So we serve at your pleasure, and we know we're a subcommittee of you, and who serves is all related to the commission. It was established in September 1997. We are to revitalize contaminated, blighted, and functionally obsolete historic property. The challenge is the extraordinary cost of these redevelopments that threaten economic viability. Our primary tool is to capture increased incremental taxes resulting from private investment to reimburse those eligible activities. And I know we had a meeting with the commission to go over this, and I appreciate back in April, and I know it can get to be a little murky sometimes where the money go, why'd you... But I believe it was helpful in explaining to you what we do. And our brownfield plans are approved by us, and then it comes up to the city commission. One of the things that's happened since I was on the, since I've been serving on the brownfield is we do, we are much more structured in what plans we're willing to bring forward. So we don't say yes to everything, but the plans that we feel meet the criteria, then we bring forward to the commission. So the tax incremental financing, reimbursed activity cost to that property through the brownfield tax incremental. So that's the TIF that you hear about. And what is eligible facilities and contaminated, you know, as we've had, and there's a number of them around the city because of the industry we've had. Blighted is pretty obvious, something that just kind of hangs out there, and those are pictures of how things used to look. Functionally designated and associated with brownfield activity, and then must be approved by us, and then you. Phase one is the environment site assessment. So we look at hazardous substances in the soil or in the groundwater. We then, phase two is sampling and analysis of the soil, the groundwater, and then phase three is environmental assessment. And it will depend on what we see, how much brownfield reimbursement the developers are, have the ability to access. Do care activities is prevent of exposure to pre-existing contamination, and then additional response activities to protect human health and the environment. Non-environment activities is lead and asbestos abatement, demolition, site preparation, and infrastructure. And these, again, are pictures of things that have happened. Base year established with the brownfield plan, the investment made in the property taxes increase, the developer pays the taxes based on the new assessment, and the increased taxes due to development are captured and used to reimburse the developer for the approved eligible activities. So there's a five-year capture, and it trickles down. It gets murky, but I think the take-home point of all this is, if we didn't have the brownfield plan, the brownfield plan helps the developer want to redevelop the areas. And so as we'll talk about our projects, you'll see, I think you'll see how we fall into it. Now, certainly, there are some cons to brownfield, and we've heard them around town, and so this is our opportunity to talk about them. The taxing jurisdictions do not realize the additional revenues until the brownfield obligations are paid off, may provide for development that some may not favor, and may increase the public infrastructural expenses because of the TIF reimbursement. But again, I go back to, if it was just blighted, or it was a building that no business was coming, you weren't getting any taxes anyway. So better to get some as we do the development than none by not doing it. The pros, provides development that would otherwise not be possible, leverages 75% outside funding with a 25% city match, helps funding public infrastructure, significantly increases long-term property taxes, and stimulates spin-off development. And I think if you've driven now Washington, which I'm sure you all have, you've seen what a strong and healthy corridor we have when you go between Liberty Way and Dow to Founder's Landing. And I would challenge you to drive down some of the other cities in the Upper Peninsula, and I don't think you're going to have such a healthy corridor of businesses. So these are the people on our Development Authority, and as was noted, we are looking forward to more members, so. One of the questions we had for the commission was, we've had some questions about whether or not we can attend the meeting remotely. Calling in, we've been, a number of, we have a pretty balanced board, both by age, by interest, and the question has been, is someone able to call in and attend? And currently, the way the rules are written, we can't. But we also know that other entities are letting people attend meetings remotely. We meet in an area where we could easily Skype in and see ourselves on the TV and see the rest of us. So the technology is there to do that, so. They asked me. We had a meeting last on Thursday, and I said, "I'm coming before you," and I would present that as a request from us. Also, the other thing that we needed clarification from, and I see that you guys had commissioners missing the meeting and they were excused. We've had some members miss meetings, and we know the rule about, Mr. Katers has been very clear to us what the rule is, either three consecutive meetings or a third of our meetings, then they should be asked to resign. The question has been, we've had excused absences. Is there a difference between excused absence or not excused? If there's not a reason why that makes a difference, then why ask, and why put that in the minutes? I noticed you had commissioners that were excused. We've had excused members also, and it wasn't clear in your rules whether that would mean somebody would have to leave the board. Financial obligations, the development agreement describes terms and conditions for tax caption reimbursement, including obligations, the authority, including reimbursement to developers. And so I say, it's very clear, as money, as we do these build-outs and tax money starts to come in, who gets what, when, in the list. And of course, we want to make our bond payments because we want to make sure you guys still have good ratings. It's all good. So these are some of our projects. This is Founder's Landing, and we have the condominium, we have the Hampton, Marquette One's coming online. I know I talked to Barry on Thursday, and I think he told us we had 16 apartments still open out of 65 that at Marquette One were built out. So certainly, we're seeing, we're seeing people moving in. And that picture reminds you what it used to look like and what it looks like now. So that number's just going to get better and better. Thursday, there's a ribbon cutting for the other hotel they're putting in. That is the one Marquette Place that we talked about with the parking, or with the apartments. And then this is Liberty Way, and the biggest thing about Liberty Way is it used to have those bunny rabbits and the old bakery that, when they looked at, there just was not going to be interest in keeping that going as a bakery. And yet, with Liberty Way as it exists, we have the hotel, we have the office building where 150 people come to work every day. And the reason we can have such density there is because of the underground parking. And then, of course, we have the M-Bank Building. Nestle Down is one of our smaller projects, and so that, and now we just finalized Nestle Down. It's all done, right, Sherry? So you won't see that next year at all. It's finished. We finally finished the project. DLP, we opened a hospital. I don't know if you guys all knew that. A hospital's open in June, but that was part of our brownfield and your new municipal building, and that's where we're meeting. And like I said, we have, we appreciate you letting us use your meeting space, and we appreciate the ability to be able to have presentations or potentially have a member join us. And this outlines DLP. It's certainly our largest project that we've been overseeing. This is a new one that should be coming out online, talk about blighted. Remember that, when that building, it was just referred to in town as the place where the dead guy was, the only founder. Now, I think it's going to be known as the place that has the great, the great macaroons. I'm looking forward. I can, right now, only get those once a week, down at the coffee. Now, once this gets open, every day, I can go down there and have a macaroon. But there'll be apartments on top, bakery underneath, and better access right next to the building going on down to the parking behind. In that one, that was a joint coordination between DDA, because it was a downtown project, the LDFA, which gets a portion of the TIFs also, and then the brownfield, and we worked well together. One of the things I'm always proud of our brownfield is we work well with developers, we work well with the commission, we work well with other committees within the city. So if anything, it's working well, and we certainly appreciate when you want to comment and you want us to change things, but I think we're, we all listen to each other. Key projects, so we talked about the Marquette Place and the parking, Founder's Pier redevelopment, the hospital, and now the question will be, what are we, now that we've moved the hospital, what's going to go in that hospital? There's been some interest by developers. It's still being worked on. The 231 West Bakery, and then integration with the LDFA, so. Potential, and potential for Cliffs Dow. We keep, we keep thinking we're getting close to opening that up and doing something with it, so. Now, we get more tests, and we have to do some more. So questions you have for me from brownfield. Oh, but I told you about my shirt just before the questions. I also wore shoes today that I wanted to talk about and show you. These are glow-in-the-dark, super cool shoes that show the galaxy, and I wanted to remind all of you that, you know, think big when you're talking about brownfields. It's going to make Marquette better and better, so. Busy as a bee and shoot for the stars. All right, now I'm ready for questions.
Any questions? Please, Commissioner Campana.
Yes.
Well, Kelly, thank you for presenting to us tonight. I think everybody realizes that the brownfield authority has been very instrumental in all the new development that's been happening in Marquette over the years. Tonight, I think you brought out a couple good points that people should, again, pay attention to. Number one is that if you don't have a brownfield incentive, a lot of this development would not happen. It's, you know, it's the carrot before the rabbit that, you know, gets them going. The other thing is, brownfield TIF taxes don't go into somebody's pocket. They actually stay within the community. They're used in a different way, but it overall benefits the community, so we're happy for that. Questions I may have is, when, and not everybody gets a brownfield. I'm sure you have...
Yes, we have turned them down. There are, and that's why I really like the plans that we put in place, and give Sherry something when they come in and talk to her. Might brownfield be a tool that we can use? And it isn't always. I mean, I think an example that we're all very aware of is the orphanage, right? One would have thought that would have been a great brownfield, but when we picked it all apart, it was not, not a good brownfield option, and they found other funding, so. We don't always say yes to all of them, no.
One last thing. When you do a plan for a development...
Yes.
What percentage do you capture? Do you capture all of it? Is it a certain amount of tax above, you know, the starting amount? Or maybe I'm not asking this right?
Yeah, so I know what you're saying. It's like, how much do we pull out of it?
Yeah, yeah. Do you pull out 100% of the taxes?
No.
A certain amount of the increased tax?
Yes.
Okay, is that very according to...
And so it's all, there's a formula.
Formula, okay.
We all follow, and Mary would be very happy if she could tell you all the details. But I'm sure, and we talk about that, yes, there is a set listing of who gets paid when, and how the money trickles down.
Okay, good, thank you. Just glad that you're, you know, the brownfields working for the City of Marquette. Thank you.
And then a part of that is like when we work with DDA and some of these, they get put into the mix also.
Thank you for the presentation, Kelly, and for all your work. It seems like you've been on the brownfield...
A long time, yes, that's true.
What, which, I'm just curious, which project are you most proud of?
Well, that, and that's a fair question. I think, and I've talked about it, so it's not, it's not, is that I do have financial interest in the Stay Bridge. And so every time my relatives stay there and they tell me what a great hotel it is, I'm like, "Yeah, that's good." So I like that one. I had my high school reunion a couple years ago, and it was interesting to talk to people and who hadn't been in Marquette for a while, and they're like, "Oh, you know, what are you doing?" People in your my age, they're retiring and all that, and I'm like, "Well, I'm on brownfield, and this is all the things I did, and let me drive you around, show you." And they were, they were very impressed with how it, how it works, before their eyes closed over, and then they were like, "We're kind of done with you now." But it's exciting. I mean, you drive around town, you go, "I helped this happen." So I think the hospital was, was a big one, too, going down there. I had people ask me why I was in the picture, you know, and they all thought it was because I was, my husband stood next to me. I said, "No, he was chief of staff, and I was in charge of brownfield, and if I wasn't there, he wouldn't have been standing there." So that's, so that was a good one, you know. I was proud of that hospital, too. I mean, I think it's something our community needed. If you've been in the old one, which most of you have been, you've seen how broken up it was. I'm excited, I hope, I do hope we find a way forward on what's going to go in there because we don't want that just to be a orphanage like we had for so many years, so. Those are fair questions, but I'm always looking at what's the next big thing. What do you like? Which one do you like? Or I'm not allowed to ask you questions.
You can ask me questions. I haven't been on the commission all that long, but I like the small ones. I think they're really interesting.
The Nestle Down or the...
Like the Nestle Down and the upcoming patisserie and...
Yeah.
It's just, to me, I always said a brownfield had to be the big, so it's kind of interesting that there is a wide...
We can go all...
...range of options, so.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. You're welcome.
Brownfield's doing really good. You guys got a couple more projects coming up with the Chyris Park, probably won't probably be a brownfield project, but I think Prescott might be a little brownfield project for you eventually, whatever they decide what they're doing with that one. You think that's going to be a little...
The power plant or the...
The Prescott Power Plant, so a small, little brownfield project for you possibly?
Yeah, Sherry's been to a lot of the national and state meetings, and I was at the Chicago one... Yeah, Sherri's been to a lot of the national and state meetings and I was at the Chicago one, what, two, three years ago? And, and, and there were a number of power plants that had become brownfield redevelopment. And so she and I sat in on that and I fully anticipate, yes, that will, when somebody decides what to do with it.
Exactly. When somebody, we've been talking to people, like meetings we've been to downstate. They said, oh, we got power plants closed. They don't know what they're doing with them. So I'm glad, you know, people are aware of it and you guys are doing a great job. Did one of the meetings we've been to, they said, Houghton's got more brownfields than us. I said, well, be careful. When you say somebody's got more than us, we built one, Mike built one roundabout and then Marquette one, then Nishman built two. So then Mike built five roundabouts. So I said, be careful. They said, you want more brownfields? You can have them. You know, but Brownfield do a great job. And I think the most impressive is like you said, M-Bank, that, that whole area, the old bunny rabbits, that's just amazing. But that, how many buildings are stacked in the one little area? How you, how they came up with that? That's just amazing. And the sand developers doing, you know, the old hospitals. So wouldn't put it past them to do something great with that one too. So look forward to your next project and just keep, keep going.
But like I said, I think, I think it is important to realize we can be small projects or we can be big projects. And it's just making sure it's the right, right tool that that developer needs to have it happen. You're wel-
Be this extraordinarily important part of, of Marquette's boards and committees. It really is one that is remaking the city, I think, in far, far better ways than we had it thirty years ago. I like your comment regarding trying to figure out how we can have electronic participation in meetings. I think we need to get there. I sit on a couple of national boards and that's the way we conduct our business.
Right. So you know what is happening, right?
So it's, there certainly has precedence for it. Whether or not our charter allows it, I don't know. I think we need to throw that one at the attorney and say that we want to find a reason not, not to do it, but find that reason that says we can do it. And if we cannot, we need to look at putting it on a charter revision then for an election and move into the twenty-first century. Because we do have, I think, application for that. I don't know it fits every committee. I don't know it fits every circumstance. But we need to get there with it.
Right.
Because we're losing too much talent by not being able to do that. Likewise, we need to get a handle on excuse absence versus just an absence to figure out what that really means.
What does it really mean? We appreciate clarification.
At this point, I can't throw you an answer, but I think we need to, need to come up with one.
That's good. It's all right.
So thank you very much for your insight again.
Yeah.
Especially for serving beyond your time.
I, I, I'm aware of that. And as we said, there are two members, two openings. So there is a potential you will not see me next year back, but.
Thank you.
They're getting smarter, my group there. They was like, not yet, not today.
Commissioners, that brings us down to item four, which is the City Park Traffic Ordinance, number six eight zero. Reminder to me as well as everybody, that's a roll call vote. Clerk, if you could please read the background to it.
Thank you, Mayor Background. The city administration has determined that it is in the interest of the city to adopt an ordinance to regulate, regulate motor vehicles within the city park system. The proposed ordinance covers all parks and specifically allows for enforcement of parking at Prescott Park without the addition of a multitude of signs cluttering the drive. The city commission scheduled this public hearing at the June tenth, two thousand nineteen regular meeting. Since that time, item I was struck because it regulated bike path, did not pertain specifically to parks. Fiscal effect, none with this action. Recommendation, following the public hearing, adopt City Park Traffic Ordinance, number six eighty. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
That said, I will declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to comment on that ordinance, please come forward and do so. Anyone wishing to comment on ordinance six eight zero? And that's the City Park Traffic Ordinance as it would apply to particularly Prescott Park. Seeing no comments, public hearing is closed. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Any comments to make regarding it? Commissioner Smith?
I'd just like to make a motion.
We can motion?
I move that we-
Yes.
Adopt ordinance six eight zero regarding the City Park Traffic Ordinance.
Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Commissioner Smith, any further comment?
It sounds like this is a creative way to solve some of our issues with a lot of signs at Prescott and it could address issues at all parks as well. So thank you to city staff for coming up with a nice solution here.
Commissioner Frazier?
I agree. It's a good way to come up with a solution to a longstanding problem and hopefully people will bear the signs.
Any other commissioners' comments? Seeing none, I'll make one which is, I think it's a good solution to the problem. The ordinance as presented, when you have a chance to read it, as an effort to control some of the significant parking problems we've had around Prescott. So I, I certainly will support it. Clerk, if you will please conduct the vote.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Stonehouse?
Yes. That motion passes five zero. That brings us down to the Consent Agenda, which is item five. Commissioners, your pleasure please. Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as written.
Any other commissioner, commissioner, or I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Second.
Commissioner Frazier, further?
No comment.
Mayor Protem?
None.
Any other commissioner comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please motion by, or please signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed by no. Hearing none. Motion passes five to zero. New business, that brings us down to item number six, which is reimbursement to Commissioner Frazier for travel. And clerk, if you will, please read the docket.
Thank you, Mayor Background. Commissioner Frazier attended an annual Michigan Municipal League UP Education Summit held in Escanaba on June sixth and seventh, two thousand nineteen. The following check will be issued for travel expenses incurred. Commissioner Pete Frazier, check number nine nine two eight two seven ninety-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. Fiscal effect, total travel costs are ninety-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. Adequate funds are available within the fiscal year two thousand nineteen city commission travel budget. Recommendation, approve travel reimbursement for Commissioner Frazier in the amount of ninety-eight dollars and twenty-four cents for the Michigan Municipal League UP Education Summit. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, as a reminder, Commissioner Frazier will reclusive himself during this vote. Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that we approve the travel reimbursement for Commissioner Frazier in the amount of ninety-eight dollars and twenty-four cents for the Michigan Municipal League UP Education Summit.
Is there a second? Commissioner Campana?
I second that motion.
Mayor Protem, any further comments?
None.
Commissioner Frazier? Frazier, I'm sorry-
I'll say none. None.
None. Any other commissioner? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes, yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by no, motion passes four to zero. Brings us down to item seven, the Williams Park Athletic Courts and ADA Access. And clerk, if you will, please read the background.
Thank you, Mayor Background. At its March thirteenth, two thousand seventeen meeting, the city commission authorizing, authorized submitting a Michigan National Resources Trust Fund grant application for renovation of three tennis courts, one basketball court, and construction of accessible routes within the park. The city received and executed grant agreement from the state in December of two thousand eighteen. The grant award is a hundred and twelve thousand dollars with the match requirement of forty-eight thousand dollars. Forty thousand dollars of the match will be provided by the Marquette Tennis Association with eight thousand dollars of general fund obligation. The total project, project budget of one hundred, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars includes design and construction services. At its June tenth, two thousand nineteen regular meeting, the city commission approved GEI consultants' proposal for design and construction oversight of the Williams Athletic Court renovations and ADA access project in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars and directed the city attorney to develop a professional services agreement. Fiscal effect, the project is budgeted for and is within the extended, expected cost for professional services. Recommendation, approve the contract with GEI consultants for design and construction oversight of the Williams Athletic Court renovations and ADA access project in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioner Campana?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the contract with GEI consultants for design and construction oversight of the Williams Athletic Court renovations and ADA access project in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign it.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Commissioner Campana, further comments?
Just would like to say that GEI has proven to be a competent and professional project manager with past city developments. And I'm, think we are very confident that they will be successful with this Williams Park project.
Commissioner Frazier?
I agree, Commissioner Campana. GEI is very, very good to work with. And, excuse me, I like the fact they're adding ADA access to a really, really nice park. It was improved by the city many years ago and good for the kids, but it's always hard to have ADA access to it because of the way it was built. So I'm glad they're helping allow ADA access to it.
Any other commissioner? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by saying yes.
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 Any opposed by no? Hearing none, motion passes five to zero. That brings us to the second public comment period. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments.
Frank Javertow, these are my opinions. June tenth, the planning spokesman listed their objectives, which included compliance with the master plan. However, when the plan was revised, we were told nothing in it is final, that it's more of a guide. Yet whenever a controversial action is taken, proponents say, it's in the master plan, as if that justifies what isn't always in the best public interest. The spokesman also said this board is monitoring our new hospital's failure to account for employee parking. One would think that could only happen here, except the plans were drawn in Tennessee. Of course, it has happened here too, with the approval of a five-story building on Third and Main Streets. The building will cover many parking spaces, but provide only twelve additional spots that occupants of the building are projected to use. In the civilized world, parking is situated prior to a building's completion. For example, the new tower in Milwaukee. Of course, this board won't learn because the only part of a site plan they can read is the signature in the lower corner. The public isn't heard, partly because the guy whom all discourse is supposed to be delivered through habitually works on unrelated matter during public comment. He's too far above the public process to care. In fact, he voted to ban closing comment altogether. He did so after residents carefully explained the compelling reasons to keep it. We now see more people use public car, closing comment exactly for the documented reasons that Mr. Stonehouse and Campana neglected to consider. They'd rather deny everyone a due opportunity than reply to a few residents whom this board has no answers for. Sheer cowardice. They have no answer because with such compelling accusations on record, there is no answer that wouldn't dig them in deeper. Either they reply in silence or try to divert public attention off the key points. June tenth, Mr. Campana said he doesn't like the mayor accused of lying, that being Mr. Stonehouse's alleged broken promise that there'd be plenty of time for public input on parcel two. I don't like the mayor accused of lying a whole lot more than Mr. Campana doesn't. Mr. Campana tried to divert the public by not addressing the specifics. This is what he needed to address from June tenth, quote, "No one has bothered to explain why in all the time between October ninth and April twenty-ninth, the renderings we briefly saw on October ninth couldn't have been copied for inclusion in the April twenty-ninth packet." Seven months this board had, requests from several residents to provide them were ignored. So long as Mr. Stonehouse assured us of this opportunity, it was up to him to make sure this was fulfilled," end quote. What I've, what I have informed our public about for twenty-one years is increasingly apparent. Hartwood, the doomed buffer of trees near Lighthouse Park, the Shyrus Park erosion, the talk of ruining the wooded buffer at Flounders, the step-by-step, hurdle-by-hurdle, systematic denuding of our natural spaces, accompanied by well-documented opposition.
Anyone else to address the commission? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Commissioner Campana, would you start?
Short but effective meeting. I don't have much to say. The point was brought out about Coast Guard Road remaining the name of the road. I kind of like that idea, but I'm sure community development had a reason, but I think we'll probably be talking about this. Personally, I like the idea of keeping it Coast Guard Road.
I can answer that right now if you want.
What's that?
We have no intention of changing the name of the road. I think the engineer just used that as a term in the letter. So not, not an official designation. There's been no discussion whatsoever to change the name.
Commissioner Frazier?
I like that too. I like Commissioner Campana. I've always known the road is, it's an old Lakeshore Road, actually. Walter Anderson said, old Lakeshore, but we've always just told it Coast Guard Road. So it's a good way to make a Coast Guard Road. Engineer probably said Museum Road because it's going to give museum better access and more parking because the OB's in back, so it was just in the front of the building. So it was hard for them to get access for parking. So I think it's a good idea and I think Museum has a problem with that either. So I think it's a good idea. Fair, Sarah's Park, that's, was hit a long, a few years ago by a storm and lake levels are increasing every month. And so there's not much, I mean, their work, we've contracted GEI, there's a contractor working on it. They're looking at the best solution to solve the problem. There's not, you can't just say, okay, we're gonna solve the problem right now because it takes a lot of funding. The city's in the process of looking for funding through grants, stuff like that, trying to solve the problem. It'll get solved eventually, but many times, lake levels are increasing. They go high. You know, when I took apart, walked down McCurry's Cove, lifeguard stations are set back so far from the water and the water's almost touching the Coast Guard, the lifeguard stations right now. So water's going up. And if, you know, certain people take advantage of public comment, that's great. Certain people love public comment for themselves and if they think they can do a better job than our city mayor, who does a wonderful job. And the person loves to comment, every city manager we've had, every mayor we've had, and tell them what they did wrong. Go ahead, run for commission and try it yourself. That's all I gotta say.
Commissioner Smith?
So it's art week. We've got some of these up front if anyone wants one. I think we've got a couple extra up here. But exciting stuff going on all week in the city of Marquette downtown and elsewhere. Check it out. Coming up on Food Fest and fireworks. And as part of that, we have a new fireworks ordinance. So make sure you're up to speed on that before you're lighting off fireworks in your neighborhood. I'm looking here, it looks like you can light them between eleven AM and eleven forty-five PM, July third through July fifth. So make sure you're following those rules. And if you have questions, that ordinance is available on the city Marquette website. Also, Innovate Marquette and the Smart Zone are doing a return north event. It's a professional careers reception for talent to move back home. It's on Friday, July fifth at the Landmark Inn from three to six PM. It's free to attend. So if you have family or friends in town for the Fourth of July, thinking about moving back home, thinking about moving here, tell them to come. There's gonna be a lot of interesting job opportunities there for them and I'm hoping we can kind of retain and attract some talent that day. Thanks.
Nope, no comments.
No comments? Well, let me just close with, I guess, a reiteration, a little bit of what Commissioner Smith said about fireworks on the Fourth of July. Let's make it a safe holiday, guys, in every way we can. Not only boating, but family activities, especially the fireworks in the evening. Remember, we do have a new ordinance out and please take a look on it. It's available online. And let's just keep a good, safe holiday in Marquette and make sure everybody can survive in, without any, any injury or damage. For the record, too, I fully support Coast Guard Road. I think what probably happened in the process of doing the design drawings is somebody made a very logical name to something simply to make it easier as the design went along and really was no intention of changing a name. So I'm sure we'll see that on the official dedication ceremony as this, these things are put together. No further comments from me. That will pass us over then to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. We appreciate the continued support. Just a very quick comment that we're, we're making some very good progress with the situation at the old dump site in South Marquette, as was noted in the news or on the pa, in the paper, that we've been working closely with the Superior Watership Partnership in the removal of tires. And my thanks to them for stepping up and offering the assistance with the grant that they have for that purpose. they have for that purpose. We continue to work with Eagle, formerly, formerly, formerly the DEQ, about the other situations there and I believe everything will be satisfactory when we're complete. And lastly, I just wanted to point out also that the, there was a nice article in the paper last week regarding the senior center and the congregate meals that they're now providing for seniors down there, it was noted that there's, the attendance has grown and I think it was a step in the right direction for the senior center to get involved in providing those meals, so I just wanted to make that, that comment, other than that, that's all I have.